From May 15, 2018, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Here.
Mayor Gans.
Here. Can we have everyone please stand for a moment of silence and our Pledge of Allegiance? Good. A pledge of allegiance.
Stand the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under thy eye indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have approval of the city commission meeting minutes for April 17, 2018.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Yes.
Mayor Gans.
Yes. Can we also have, let's see, I think that's all we have right there. Our next is our proclamations. We have a proclamation.
Motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'm sorry, approval of the city commission meeting agenda. Thank you very much.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now for our words of recognitions. According to the U.S. Coast Guard, nearly 70 percent of fatalities are preventable and are caused by drowning. Life jackets are the lifeblood of safe boating. During National Safe Boating Week, we seek to raise awareness to improve safety and reduce accidents in our nation's waters. The Coast Guard offers these tips to reduce risk. Don't drink, take a safety course, get a free vessel safety check, and know about carbon monoxide. The extra effort that goes into taking these kinds of precautions will help create fun-filled adventures for you and your family on our waterways. The city of Deerfield Beach is calling upon all of our residents to boat smart, boat safe, wear a life jacket, and practice safe boating habits year-round. Whereas Deerfield Beach many waterways give boating enthusiasts the opportunity to enjoy the outdoors and spend time with family and friends, however, far too many Americans are hurt or killed each year in boating accidents that are largely preventable. Nearly 70 percent of them can be prevented. Whereas each year to the thousands of boating accidents that occur, many are caused by operators who are careless, reckless, or inexperienced. In most cases, boat operators had received no safety instruction, and many of those who died could have been saved if they had worn their life jackets. During National Safe Boating Week, we seek to raise awareness to improve safety and reduce accidents all across our waterways. Whereas the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary recommends that boaters get safety checks, ensure that boats are properly maintained, take safe boating classes, be aware of homeland security issues, always wear a safe life jacket, and never operate a boat under influence of alcohol or drugs. And whereas modern life jackets are more comfortable or attractive and more wearable than styles of years past, deserve a fresh look by today's boating enthusiast. And whereas by learning about boating safety and taking some simple precautions, recreational boaters can reduce the risk of accidents and ensures that their time in the water is safe and responsible. Now therefore, I Bill Gans, the mayor of the city of Deerfield Beach, in recognition therefore of you hereby proclaim, May 19 through the 25th, as National Boat Safety Week. We have members from the auxiliary here. Thank you. Care to speak? Absolutely. Just go right to the mic and introduce yourself, please. That's perfect.
As the mayor said.
If you just have your name and address to the record.
My name is Bruce Freed, and I am the Vice Flotilla Commander of Flotilla 3-4 on Pompano Beach. I am along with the U.S. Power Squadron. We will be at Aldorf's Park on the 19th, giving out free vessel exams. The key word there is "free." We're there to make sure that you are not in violation of U.S. Coast Guard or FWC Florida Wildlife Commission laws. Florida Wildlife Commission is the ones who are responsible for the waters of the state of Florida. For each violation, if you get stopped by them, it is a $150 fine for each violation. And it is our job to make sure that you do not get fined. We want to make sure that you are safe on the water and your family as well. And I just want to say, thank you.
Commissioner Drosky, I'm going to let you do the honors for our presentation for the International Society for Autism.
I see Erica coming down now. I believe she has a presentation for us.
Usually facing us. Well, thank you, Commissioner Drosky, for letting me know what to present tonight. It's a couple of familiar faces over here. So my name's Erica Rubin, and I'm the Executive Director of the International Society for Autism. And we are a vocational vendor here in Deerfield Beach, so we help people with disabilities get jobs. So a little bit of our history and how we do that. Dr. Rubin, who is also our Chairman of the Board, he also sits as the Vice Chair on the Florida Board for the Psychology, or the Florida Board of Psychology. He had started an introduction 11 years ago and wanted to give back to Deerfield Beach, so started a nonprofit that allowed us to become a vendor for the vocational rehab. So when we did that, we decided that the young adults, the most thing that we could help them is get jobs, so that they were successful in helping our community and giving back to the community as well. So some of our partners here in Deerfield are Embassy Suites, the Northeast Focal Point. They bring our students on as interns and let them learn to do some job shadowing and really, you know, help us out by helping the young adults get jobs. And so we have a little video ready to show. Brandon, who is on our video, he wouldn't have done as much as he could in his life without having these internships with our community partners and working with the community to build his skills and to build his, you know, things that you learn to do a job, to get there on time, to dress appropriately. So just wanted to thank the community and let you guys know that if you need, ever need some extra hands in any other things that you're doing, to give us a call and we'll help out. So I'll let you show the video.
To the guy that started this race.
Hi, everyone. It's a Brandon's Run, and it was his inspiration and his idea, so we made his dream come true to have his own race. So thanks, everybody, for coming, and let's get running.
On your mark, get set, go!
I'm Erica Rubin. Welcome to Brandon's Fifth Annual Run for Autism. We are the International Society for Autism. We help people with disabilities get jobs here in Deerfield Beach.
The money raised through Brandon's Run and the International Society for Autism, 100 percent of it goes to help young adults get jobs in the community. Usually, our young adults will start off as a volunteer. They'll get paid $25 a week with the hopes of then getting hired on full-time. We've been successful in helping hundreds of young adults get jobs in the community. I just want to thank everyone for your support.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Good job, Brandon!
Thank you, guys, for coming.
It should come as no surprise that International Society for Autism is a District Four, located in District Four, but they do great work here in the city of Deerfield Beach. And I think we should do more, you know, to promote the businesses that we have here. So I want to thank Erica and Drew for coming tonight and making a presentation to us. Thank you very much.
Next, we have our quasi-judicial public hearings.
Quasi-judicial public hearings. Is anyone going to testify on, actually, we have one, item three. Would you please stand and let me administer the oath. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and help your God? All right, is the applicant here? I'd ask the applicant to step forward and indicate whether they wish to waive the formal quasi-judicial proceeding. Please step forward. State your name and whether you wish to waive.
Yes, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Surkdisian. I represent Police Land Surveyors, the applicant, on behalf of Mr. John Kennelly, the owner of the property.
Thank you. Can you speak a little more to the mic, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is it on?
I'm not sure. Should I say the whole speech again?
No, we heard. Thank you. City manager, we have Mr. Powers.
Yes. Mr. Power, thank you.
This one works. This is an application for a plat for 6,000 square feet of commercial use on a B1 parcel. This is not an application for a site plan or a specific use. This is an application only for the commercial property. The applicant has stated through the application that he would wish to possibly turn this property into either a gas station slash convenience store, and the property has been made aware of the fact that at the time, that use is not permitted.
And I think we should make it clear to the applicant by approving this plat, we are not approving any particular use other than, obviously, the uses in the B1 zoning district are, if they meet all the requirements, but...
Excuse me, I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't a gas station, it's a car wash. But again, this is just the plat, and the owner is fully aware that it's totally...
You understand, this approval tonight is not an approval of a car wash.
No, not at all.
In fact, a car wash is not permitted at this point.
Not at all. The restrictive note on the plat specifically says "commercial use," period. It can be construed into anything else that's permitted.
Okay. Just for clarification, from a legal standpoint, this is something that we don't have an option.
At my understanding, Mr. Power, they meet all the code requirements for approval of the plat, of replat.
That is correct. They've met all the city requirements for the plat. This is an item that has to go before Broward County, and the item is required to come before the city commission before going to Broward County for approval.
The case law is very specific with regard to approval of plats. If all the land development code requirements are met, then the approval of the plat becomes a ministerial responsibility of the commission meeting, that your discretion at that point disappears with regard to the approval, and you would be required to approve the plat.
And just for the record, what I'd like to say is, while the zoning is pretty clear that this is not allowed, I have no intention of supporting anything that would change that, that would allow that type of use in that area, so. Commissioner Drosky?
I just want to be very clear. We're not approving any uses tonight, because in my backup material, I flagged it, is, the name of this plat is called Whale of a Wash Plat, and then there is a car wash, I highlighted in green, designated on one of the drawings as part of my backup, so...
I'm sorry. Yeah, so the applicant is required to provide an example of the use, which is what you have in your background, but you are correct. They did state that the intention is to eventually do a car wash. I apologize if I said gas station, I'm sorry. But yes, a car wash with a convenience store is the original intention, but that is a, that is not a, I'm sorry, that's just an example document they're required to provide us.
But that will not be on the plat?
No.
No.
Just the plat note for 6,000 commercial square feet.
And if you'd like, in making the motion, you can indicate, you can move to approve the plat with a specific statement that the backup material with regard to a car wash is not part of the approval, and in fact is not approved, and that you are approving the plat with 6,000 square foot of commercial, and it's presently zoned B1, and in that case, you're not, you know, not permitting any particular, any car wash, because it's not a permitted use.
I'd like to make that motion, that we approve the plat without...
But before you do, we have a light system. If we can go with the lights first.
I didn't see the lights.
Commissioner Parnas, then Vice Mayor Battle. Then I'll assume Commissioner Miller.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. We're going to have to go through, also the public being allowed to speak on this as well. Vice Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I'm concerned about this plat, and there are two reasons. I tell you my two reasons. My first reason is because it sit right behind or next to the Boys and Girls Club. We should be very, very careful in approving, you know, plats and businesses or whatever that are going to be located near our children. That's my first objection. The other thing that troubles me about this is the ingress and egress of the property. Where it sits now, on the opposite side of it, you have the eyeglass place, Eyewill. It used to be owned by John, but he sold that. And then at the very corner then of Dixie Highway and Hillsborough Boulevard, you have the Boys and Girls Club. There is no way to get to this particular property, basically going west, since we came in and we redid the streets, okay? There is no turn. You can't even turn left to get on the first terrace. So somebody who wants to access this business one way or the other has to either be coming, going east on Dixie Highway. That's the only way that they can get there. If they're coming out of that, once it's built, one way or the other, they still have to go east. Go east and then turn on Dixie Highway in order to get out from where they're going. And so it's, the two things that troubles me about this is the traffic pattern and the proximity to the Boys and Girls Club. And I understand what we're saying, we're just authorizing whatever to approve the commercial designation. Mr. Power, I want you to go through for me. I tried to get to, and you told me how to get to it, so now I know how to get a MUNI code. The portion of it that says this is B1 community, explain that so that the audience will know exactly what we're talking about here.
Sure. So our zoning code, like a lot of other municipalities zoning codes, has a hierarchy related to uses. So B1 is the most restrictive commercial uses, then B2 has more uses, and B3 has more uses. The intention of a B1, and actually, the title is really the neighborhood uses, places, things that you might see internal to streets, so you know, office, medical, and those types of things, not necessarily industrial, heavy industry, or anything like that.
Thank you. And if you would, again, tell me why I have to vote yes on this.
Because the, you're not, you're approving just basically, well, not basically, you're approving a plat which provides for the ingress and egress, reviews the plat for adequacy of transportation facilities and things of that sort. Under our code, they meet all those requirements. So based, actually, it was a 1983 case dealing with Broward County, and the Cypresshead Development and the city of Parkland is really, is where it came out of, where the Fourth District Court of Appeal, and then it has been affirmed, has ruled that when someone applies for approval of a plat, and they meet all the criteria of your land development code, and this, that's what happened in this 1983 case, they met all the requirements. Planners indicated that at both city and county level. County denied the plat anyway. And the Fourth District Court of Appeal, which is the court of appeal for our district, said that if they meet all the requirements for plat approval in your land development code, you have no authority to deny the plat. Now I think, so, and remember, you're not permit, you're just approving just general, you know, commercial uses for the purposes of determining the adequacy for transportation. Now, I spoke to Mr. Power, and the county has no more specific use, category of use than commercial. They just keep it very general. But they're being zoned B1, and, or they are zoned B1, and the car wash is not a permitted use. Is, are the property of both sides of it B1 also, Eric, or...
Yes.
Okay. So you do not have to zone this to B2. You do not have to rezone this. And that's what they would need in order to allow a car wash. Is that correct?
Either it be an amendment to the B1 code to allow this use, or it be a rezoning.
Okay. So you do not have to rezon the property. The reason you have to approve the plat is because they meet all the criteria in our land development code for the approval of a plat. Again, the plat is not the site plan. When they want a specific use among the commercial uses, then they have to come before you. And the first thing they're going to have to show you when they come in with a site plan is that the use on their site plan is permitted in the zoning district. The zoning district in question is B1. They're not going to be able to do that if they want to put a car wash there. And then, then I will have to be able to tell you, rather than saying you have to approve it, or saying, and I would tell you, you have to deny it, because they do not meet the zoning code if they come in for a car wash. So again, this is a plat to set the mapping out of the property, to review it for adequacy of transportation and things of that sort, but it is not to approve any particular use.
So having said that, then, and my other concern about this was a concern that was raised by my colleague, Commissioner Drosky. When I read the information, it clearly said "car wash." So even though we approve this plat tonight, they're not going to be able to come back in future and say to us, well, we put it in here, you saw it, it was for car washing, now you have no right to deny us, and we end up in a big lawsuit.
What we can do is, if you'd like, we'll put in the resolution of approval, we'll amend the resolution of approv, well, it's just not even going to be part of the plat, Eric, is it? I mean, the county's not going to put that in.
No. And just to follow what you were saying, you know, the Broward Next amendments, they no longer provide classification to specific types of commercial, like square footage related to office, or a car wash, or a gas station, or fast food restaurant. It's now just commercial. So they don't, they don't, they don't really narrow it down anymore.
And what we'll do is, we'll make an amendment to the resolution, number 2018, that says the plat is hereby approved, subject to the conditions set forth in the application. What we'll say is, subject to the conditions set forth in the development review report, and indicate the approval of the plat is given specifically limiting the uses to those permitted in the B1 zoning district.
Okay. Well, we got to do...
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Yes.
Just your name and address for the record, please. And also, just a reminder, will everyone please turn off your cell phones or mute them, please? Usually about that time, that means that one of them goes off, but we could just double check. Appreciate it.
Gwendolyn Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. Mayor and Commissioners, I just want to be sure, because I hear Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Battle's concerns, and those are the concerns that I'm here about also. When we built the Boys and Girls Club, and when the Boys and Girls Club was built, we tried at that time to get the owner of this property to donate that land to the Boys and Girls Club so that we could build a swimming pool for the youth at the Boys and Girls Club. And at that time, I found him not to be very cooperative with the board, and I still see from what's happening now that he continues to move forward with something that would really not be good in that location. I heard Vice Mayor Battle speak about the egress, the entrance and egress from this property. If you look at this property, it does not lend itself traffic-wise, and Andy, excuse me, Attorney Marodis, I heard you say something about transportation. Just on the basis of how the traffic is flowing on Hillsborough Boulevard, this is, it's like accidents waiting to happen, whatever he puts on that property. So I'm just hoping that the person here representing the owner of the property, that you would go back to him and ask him again to consider donating that property to the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to speak on this item?
Sandra Jackson, 386 South with 35th Avenue. I do agree with Ms. Reed and also Ms. Battle. The traffic, I don't know who have traveled on Hillsborough Boulevard, that traffic is terrible. So please, consider not approving this to get on that property. We need something else there. We have enough car wash in our area already. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close it to the public. Commission comments?
You can move it as amended, you know, as amended, the resolution. I would suggest, if you're going to approve it, approve it with the amended resolution.
Commissioner Parnas?
I'll move that it be approved as amended.
Okay, we have a motion, do we approve this amended? We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
No.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next is ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, amending section 98-53B Cove Overlay District of the City's Land Development Code.
City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gans. If you'd like, I would have Mr. Power give a brief presentation to the city commission and the general public about this item.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Tonight, before you, has a presentation, quick presentation, on a proposed code change for the Cove Overlay District. So let's talk about a little bit, what is and where is the Cove? So the Cove is a shopping plaza that is located east of Federal Highway along Hillsborough Boulevard. It became a code item about a decade ago, the city decided is the best way to rejuvenate the Cove property would actually give it its own overlay district. And the intention of that code change was essentially create an area that would be vibrant and have activity both during the daytime and at nighttime. That was the intent. The property actually had a charrette in 2007, and actually, from that came the Cove Master Plan. I don't know if anyone remembers that time, 2007, the Cove Master Plan. Essentially, what they stated predominantly was that there should be a Key West-style architecture for the property. So just some interesting information about the Cove. It's made up of over 40 separate parcels, has multiple owners, so there is no unifying or majority owner for the property. And if you're familiar with the property, we have some upcoming projects, one being the proposed hotel, and the other being the connection to Sullivan Park underneath the Intercoastal Bridge. So when we look at a code change, we do, we do look at it holistically, and we try to decide what is it that's changed over time, or how can we make this particular code section better? And one of the things we looked at were the uses, you know, what can we do to increase some of the uses here in the Cove to get that vibrant style that I think the city was looking for about a decade ago? One of those uses, we think, is craft artisan production. That sounds like a, like someone who does like, you know, beads or sandglass, but what that really actually includes is people who can do craft artisan, like microbreweries and things of that nature. And that would be one of the options that would be available for the Cove. Additionally, we think that executive office suite, it would be a good fit for the Cove to help with their daytime uses. And currently, the district allows for residential, but does not state any requirements for the residential. So the city staff wanted to provide some additional guidelines to that residential use. By doing that, what we're asking for is that if residential does occur on the property, that it be a live-work unit. Not necessarily someone could come and tear down properties and build apartment complexes or townhouses. It would be a situation where, you know, the bottom floor would be an office, or retail establishment, the top floor could be an actual residential unit. That would be consistent with the current code. So additionally, we would like to add another item, essentially allowing alcoholic beverage establishments to be next to each other. Current code requires that alcoholic beverage establishments be within 500 feet away from each other, as well as being 500 feet away from a nursery, or a school, or a church. So we're not saying that you can't be, you still have to be... So we're not saying that you can't be, you still have to be within 500 feet of a nursery, school, or church, but you are allowed to have these establishments be next to each other, or be closer than 500 feet to each other. Again, the intent of this code is to allow for some type of nightlife. So we feel that, you know, this would help promote that, that particular activity. Another aspect we're creating here is the concept of public street furniture. And I'll elaborate on that a little bit. So essentially, what we're allowing for is property that's the city's to be renovated, and to making it an area where anyone can come and sit, or if there's a restaurant that's adjacent to it, or something like that. The city would have control, it would actually come back here to the City Commission to control what the look and the feel of that public street furniture would be. And, you know, we would have indemnification and other types of rights to ensure that it be cleaned up properly and taken care of properly. So the biggest change we're making, even though it's not, you know, too much of a change, is we're reevaluating what does the Key West look, look like? You know, what does the beach look like? It was obvious when the Cove Master Plan came forward that what they wanted to do was to bring the Barrier Island beach feel a little further west into the Cove Shopping Center. So some of the things we talked about is that currently, there are two sections in the prohibitive portion of the code for architecture we would like to strike, and then therefore permit. Essentially, that's the dark stained wood and the unfinished aluminum. I'm gonna give you some photograph examples. Architecturally, things change over time. You know, Key West doesn't always look like Key West. Certain fashions come into play, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with a distressed wood look that has particularly come very common within the last five years, maybe more 10 years if you're on the barrier beach sides. But that distressed wood look, under review of code, wouldn't be permitted because it's a dark stained wood. And so that's the kind of look that we know is now very popular, especially for the beach side. We'd like to see that come forward. Just another example, that dark stained look, or the dark glass. That's what a cedar would look like. It's a little hard to tell, but that's the cedar look. And this is the reference to the aluminum windows and frames. Aluminum windows and frames, I think, I think the intention of the code was that it not be an unfinished material, but in reality is aluminum window is a very popular material, especially today, any commercial property that has to put in something new, they're gonna put in an impact window, and that aluminum frame is what the commercial elements use. They use that color. So we feel it's very important to allow that because people are gonna be putting in hurricane impact windows. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for you. One of my big concerns on that is, this is the use of plywood. That obviously comes with a big negative connotation on that, and I'm not necessarily in favor of that. You don't have any examples of what mark you were trying to hit on that, do you?
Oh, yeah, okay, so that's a great point. Because certainly unfinished plywood, you know, like you're boarding up a structure. Absolutely, I understand what you're saying. The intention for that, though, is that it's referring to any type of wood that's dark stained. So it wouldn't be a natural plywood, like I go to Home Depot and board up my windows for the hurricane. It would have to be a material and color. We do actually have situations where plywood is used for commercial buildings, maybe not necessarily in the same sense that you might find for, you know, construction purposes. They're actually meant to be artful. But the intention would be, it'd be dark stained, not unfinished.
Okay. Is it, well, that might be the intention, is it worded that way in there? That gives us protection on--
So what we're, what we're actually proposing to do is just strike this language and not actually reapply it to the code, so it's just no longer in the code. So the word plywood would just no longer be in the code.
Okay. And as far as this outdoor seating, who owns it?
The city.
The city would own it.
Mm-hmm.
Who maintains it?
The applicant.
The applicant, okay. So what are our rights when it comes to that property?
Yeah, there's a lot of thought went into this because it's a pretty innovative step. The applicant, an applicant would have to come forward who is developing the parcel right next to where the street furniture is going to be. They'd have to come up with a proposal which would be acceptable to the city, because it's city property. They'd have to enter into an agreement with the city where we approve, we approve this very specific design of it, where they are required to maintain it, where they are required to provide for insurance, and required to indemnify us on it. Plus, everything else I could think of when we do the agreement. So it's gonna be subject to an agreement for that type of maintenance. And while certainly that will be a benefit to the business that's going in, it's public street furniture. And the idea is to try to make the Cove area, you know, to provide more of an entertainment district to encourage that type of business, and allow people to be outside, and to, you know, to have that atmosphere.
So with public street furniture, obviously, the applicant's coming forward, they're maintaining it. That means it's strictly for use for that particular--
No.
No, it's for the public. It's for the public. It had been stated, and it's for the public purpose.
Okay, so anyone there? So if they think that they can have those tables out there, and it's only restricted to their patrons, that's not the case?
Right.
Okay, but they can be, those can be used additionally as, as almost an amenity that might meet the style of their actual location, but is open to anybody to use?
Yes.
Okay. So we already have that situation in the Cove in which people think that the parking spots in front of their buildings are theirs, and they put out signs and stuff like that. So we realize that that's what's gonna be coming with this, correct? Okay, I just wanna make sure.
We're, we're really looking to try to create some, like Andy said, some creative ways to inject some additional life into the Cove Shopping Plaza.
And it's fairly restrictive as far as the amount of, okay, you're not gonna have--
Geographically, there's not a lot of places where this can actually happen.
It'd be limited.
Well, based on what you said, it sounds like it's a case-by-case basis. It's a very high threshold.
And they can be different.
People just can't start slapping lawn furniture out there on the sidewalks, okay? I just wanna make sure that that's not what we're opening this up to.
It's gonna be an agreement, it's gonna be recorded against the property in question. It's gonna be very, very specific.
Okay. When it comes to the Key West architectural style, I mean, we see how that, going through all the charrettes and everything we did to get there, certainly styles change. And I think, I think some of the examples you gave are great examples of how that's changed, and that is probably more accurate to what it looks like down in the Keys, and certainly in Key West. But we also should note that, you know, when we went with the Key West style, we had a color palette. We had that, I guess the word, best word I could use is kind of taken advantage of, or phrase, I should say, is taken advantage of, because we had a giant light blue building. And that's not really Key West style.
Pastel colors, I think, is what you're referring to.
Exactly. So that's, I like to see a little bit of flexibility on that and modernize it, so I think that's good. Vice Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern, and Eric, I'm, we talked about this, but the traffic, that's my concern. Already, and we've tried to, been trying to do something about traffic in the Cove for years, one where the other, the doctors get all bent out of shape, their patients don't have anywhere to park. And now we're talking about letting people live upstairs in a building or whatever. What are we going to do? Almost like the people who are putting the signs out saying that this, you come to this restaurant. Where are these people gonna be parking? Is that, is sufficient enough parking in the Cove in order for us to be able to handle those people who are going to live-work in the Cove?
Sure, that's a great question. So, the intention of a live-work unit, though, actually, is to reduce parking because the intention would be that the property owner, or the tenant, you know, doesn't need the vehicle to get to work, or to get home. So it's, you know, taking trips off the street. Also, also that, that person wouldn't, you kind of like double that use. So you've got a parking space required for commercial, that parking space also would be the same one required for residential, because it's the same car. Having said that, obviously, there are still issues with, with the Cove parking. There's an agreement in place with the Cove that dates back years, essentially freezes the amount of parking spaces, and gave a very large reduction in parking to the Cove, you know, because it clearly just can't meet current permitted uses. I will mention that the residential is hypothetical at the moment. You know, we're not aware of anyone who actually lives in the Cove. We didn't, we saw that the use for residential was permitted. We were concerned that that could be taken advantage of, and that's why we're adding the restriction of the live-work unit.
This is actually a restriction. And any residential above and beyond that would have had to bump into the parking requirement anyway, which is, which is pretty much frozen.
Yeah, pretty much would have stopped any type of development.
That would have stopped them anyway. But to avoid any type of Burt Harris implications and things, and take away it totally, this was the, I think, I didn't come up with it, Eric did, and I think it's a good, it's, and it's encouraged. It's a representative of the type of, you know, urban village development that is being encouraged. So if it's a live-work unit, it's not the purpose, you don't have a huge high-rise there. They wouldn't meet the parking requirement anyway.
Well, plus, it's limited to just second floor.
Right.
Right. Thank you.
Commissioner Drosky, then Commissioner Parnas, then Commissioner Miller.
So that's a, that's a great segue, that's my question here. How concerned are we with the Burt Harris implication? I mean, do we have, I'm not aware of any residential in the Cove right now, is that?
No, we're not aware of any currently. We are aware of some that have existed in the past.
So why don't we take the opportunity? If there's no one there, what is the implication to removing that from, from the code?
What I would like to, well, the concern that I, that I expressed, but without going too far into it, if you'd like, I can, I can really do an analysis of it. I'd have to take a look at the uses, I'd have to see what areas are, does it go all the way to the intercoastal there?
Yeah, it does.
I'd wanna take a more careful look. So if you would like us to examine doing that, it's something that I would do. I would suggest that we not do it within the context of this ordinance where we are, since it's gone to the P and Z, and that would be a substantial, substantial change to it. But if that's something you'd want us to explore, I'd be happy to do it. But I wanted to do the type of, you know--
Well, I understand, right, that we couldn't do that tonight, or make, or change this ordinance without having to go through P and Z again. But I would want to certainly study that possibility for the future.
Basically, that was almost rhetorical. I'm assuming that's, that's direction, and we will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Parnas?
I believe we either grow or we die. The Cove kinda just sits there right now. And any improvement to make it a more popular place for the residents of Deerfield, to me, is good business. We have businesses there. Maybe we can invite or entice other businesses to grow, to come, to wanna be part of it. And I think it's, it's time. We can't just stay with the same hardware store and the same barber shop forever. I think innovation and experimenting with new businesses can certainly attract the surrounding communities to spend money in Deerfield. So I am, I am for this idea.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
I'm aware of apartments above certain of the buildings, but I couldn't say for certain if they're currently rented or not. But there definitely are apartments above buildings. I think this, I'm speaking in favor of this amendment to the code. I think this'll help out a lot of the building in the southwest corner, yellow, right by the circle, that's been dormant. It's had construction, and it's stopped. It's sitting, doing nothing. And we've got somebody, we saw, you know, the, what it's gonna look like. And I think even the seating can only be done in selected areas, so it's not gonna be in abundance. I think there would be, just like people do with their parking lots, it would be the ones that maintain it and stuff, they're gonna almost act like they own it. But I think it could be clearly designated that it's, it's available to the public. I think this'll make that brew, whatever thing with offices on top. It'll help that get developed. It'll be an asset to the entire Cove area that could actually walk or ride a bicycle there. Because on Friday night, you're not gonna have a parking lot space, but in other times, there's plenty of parking spaces. So I'm speaking for this amendment, and I think the apartments that have been there have always been there. You didn't even know about it. It hasn't caused any problem in the past. And I think this restriction of not turning a building into an apartment building in there is wise. So I'm speaking for it, and if we've had enough discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Well, we do have to open to the public.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Power. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
March Hilton, 1101 Southeast Fifth Court. I went to the charrette, and the master plan to me, I'm still in favor of. I love the Key West look, and I don't think it's old-fashioned. I think it'd be part, I think it'd be an excellent asset to the beach if we, if it was Key West. But I guess that's all, you know, and how you feel about something being modern. Also, I think they're taking away parking there, where they're gonna put the benches. That's my understanding. And also--
Yeah, they--
And also, is this a mixed use? Do they have to change, when he said "code", but does this have anything to do with zoning and changing it to mixed use? If it is, if they're gonna live upstairs. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I just wanted to piggyback on that. If maybe the city attorney could tell us specifically, how many public parking spaces do you foresee being eliminated based on this ordinance? Thank you.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach. I did not understand that there'd be parking spots taken. I've gone into the Cove numerous times, and have not been able to find a parking spot. And taking even more spots away is not the way to do, not, not the way to do this. So I would strongly recommend against this if you're gonna take public parking spots away.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public to be heard. Can we get some clarity?
Four.
What's that?
Four.
There are four spaces that would be removed?
That could be lost, yes.
Okay.
With the particular use that we're talking about, we could, the one use that might take advantage of it, we have found that they could, I believe, provide the four additional ones in the back, Eric?
Yeah, so this is, of course, not a completed process yet. It actually hasn't been submitted to the city yet. But in a conceptual plan that was reviewed by the city, the concept would be for the four parallel parking spaces that exist on the property to be renovated to become the, the street furniture. And there is a possibility to put additional parallel parking spaces in the rear of this property, but I hesitate to say that that has not been reviewed by staff, or fire, or anyone yet.
And, and just to let you know that, in the, in the ordinance itself, in the amendment itself, it indicates, with regard to the public street furniture, which is Section J, and Sub 2 indicates, "Upon the request of the city, the applicant shall commit an equivalent number of parking spaces to the spaces that will become unavailable or obstructed for public parking somewhere adjacent to the building occupied by the party wishing to place the street furniture." So we can request an equivalent. So if there's, Eric, in the back, we could request that that be available. If this is something we wanna do, and we think it works. But it is a good question. There is, if we don't make that request, there is a risk of loss of four spaces.
Okay. The other question, I believe, was about zoning? Isn't the zoning changed because residential's currently allowed?
Well, this, this is a zoning regulate, these are zoning regulations.
As far as the actual land use, it's--
No, no. If anyone being stricter on the residential portion.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
So, you know, originally, I didn't think we were talking about losing any spaces, but now that we've mentioned it, I think you're talking about, and I just want clarification, the spaces right on the north side of that yellow building that's gonna be developed, that little parallel parking space, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, that is the proposed location.
Okay. And theoretically, four spaces could be put on the south side of the building?
The applicant has stated it's possible, but staff has not reviewed that for its accuracy.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not, so I think you should consider the possibility of the loss based upon this adoption of four spaces. I think you need to take that as a possibility.
But I believe what you just referenced there, doesn't that address that?
Well, that gives us the ability, if we can find, if we can find, gives us the flexibility.
Gives us the flexibility in which way?
Requesting, either way. But, upon the request of the city. Now, we don't have to make the request, but if--
But we can make the request, and we can deny a request based on the fact that they don't have the parking to give up for what we lose. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, at least we have the ability then to make it a requirement, or that's what this essentially says here. While we can waive that--
Yes.
It's essentially telling us that they, they have to make up--
Once we make the request, upon the request of the city, the applicant shall--
Okay. Great.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward, I, to approve.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes. Yes, go ahead.
A public comment. No comments shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibility shall be permitted. The public shall be given an opportunity to speak on any non-agenda item.
Rita Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. I had an occasion a couple of weeks ago to call the Street Maintenance Division of the city because on 19th Avenue, a branch from one of the trees fell practically in the roadway, and it was blocking one lane of the street, and it created a very hazardous condition. And I'm so pleased to announce that within 10 minutes, David Cook came with his crew, Dennis and James, and they expeditiously removed that, and the hazard was alleviated. But it was a very, very dangerous situation. It was an emergency, and I'm so proud of my city to take care of it so quickly, and I thank them.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to speak?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. It was so interesting to listen to the debate at the last commission meeting on whether to hire an additional Calvin Giordano and Associates employee at a cost of $110,000 to the citizens to potentially make a difference in the continuing war on illegal dumping. Now, remember, the mayor and the commissioners have a fiduciary obligation to watch over the citizens' money and make sure it is not spent unwisely. So, let's hear some of the arguments made by the commission in support of this $110,000 new expenditure. We had the commissioners in District One and Four say, "Since we already budgeted for this new $110,000 employee, we might as well approve it." Chad Gresak, the Director of Sanitation, said, "There are no statistics yet to support the hiring of this new $110,000 position, but we have had three weeks of data now that show we opened up 47 new cases of illegal dumping." The key word here is cases, not convictions. I would have loved if someone would have asked Mr. Gresak, based on his experience, "How many of these cases eventually end up in fines being collected?"
Mr. Hirsch, it's Gresak.
Oh, I'm very sorry to Mr. Gresak. We also found out from Mr. Gresak that each illegal dumping pickup costs the city $200. So, now we know, by dividing this $200 charge into the new $110,000 cost, that this new Calvin Giordano and Associates person will have to open up at least 550 cases annually, just to have the potential of paying for himself. Commissioner Parnas said correctly, "The criminals will find out the time when we are not monitoring." He also said, "If it's not 24-hour monitoring, it will not work." If you logically think about it, how can one person patrolling 16 and 1/2 square miles of this city for an additional 40 hours a week make any meaningful dent in stopping illegal dumping? Did the city manager consider any of this before bringing up this new idea in the first place? There was a young blond citizen sitting right to my left who came up with a great innovative new idea. She said it would make more sense to offer the $110,000 as a reward program to citizens who provide information on illegal dumpers that lead to them being fined. It makes common sense that 75,000 pairs of eyes would go a lot farther than an additional two eyes. But hey, why try something innovative like that when you can just waste another $110,000 of the citizens' money?
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to speak?
My name is Joe Hines. I'm at 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. I've got the monthly reports that the manager gives the commission every month with totals and percentages and what have you, and I have the one that's ending September 30th, 2017, which is also a year-end report, and it is 100% of the expenditures and expenses and so on and so forth for 2017. You might recall, a few weeks ago, during the stormwater hearings and what have you, it was brought up that the, one of the problems with not having a set fee was rating the general fund and rating the road and bridge fund for monies needed for that. I would like to point out to you, on page 175 of your 2017 budget, it's online, we had for the road and bridge fund a total of $2,848,000. I'd also like to point out to you that on page 62 of this monthly report for the road and bridge fund, they had what they called, at the end of the year, an unencumbered balance of $652,962, we call it $653,000. That was leftover, money unspent. Then I'll take you to page 50 of that same report, and it shows that the general fund had $1.6 million leftover on, on that, and that was also a fund that would be rated by the stormwater. You add those two together, and you're at $2.3 million. I said at the time that it was a money grab to add a new tax or fee to the city. I will repeat that again, and, and I have proof, if, if you folks would just look at these numbers on this final report, you would prove that if you were told differently, you were misled, and if you weren't told, shame on the person that should have told you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to speak?
Sandra Jackson, 386 Southwest 35th Avenue. I wanna correct myself. Previously, I was, came in the middle, and I guess wasn't paying attention. I thought it was gonna be our car wash, so I misunderstood that. So, I wanna correct myself on that. Also, we had a pre-prom, and sadly, this seniors for Deerfield High School, and they always do it every year, and the people that attend that pre-prom, are part of the pre-prom, are volunteers. Next year, please, would you guys include the community, like we always be a part of that pre-prom, because this year was a mess. The way you guys organize it was not done right, and I just wanna make sure you guys let the community be involved.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone else come forward and close the public portion to be heard?
Mayor, item five through 14 are agreements, expenditures, and requests. Obviously, the public can be heard on each one of them, but if you'd like, you can vote on all of them at once, or a group of them at once, treating it as a consent agenda, after the public has a right to speak on any item that they're interested in.
Is anyone from the public, by a show of hands, wanting to speak on any item between number five through 14? We have some. So, let's go ahead and treat those individually if we could. We realize that there is a sign-in system. If you wanna speak on something, you should sign up. That makes it a lot easier, moves a lot smoother. So, in the future, if you could do that, that would be great. So, starting with number five, read that red.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving the 2018 amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County for distribution of proceeds of the fifth cent additional local gas tax on motor fuel.
Anyone from the public here to speak on number five? Not seeing anyone. We close the public to be heard.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number six, a resolution approving the 2018 amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County for distribution of the proceeds of the three cent additional local option gas tax on motor fuel.
Anyone from the public here to speak on item number six? Yes, come on up.
Mayor Francis Fagan, 3500 Southwest Atura Boulevard. I'm trying to get some clarity on what this tax consists of. From what I'm reading, that you're asking the citizens, that when we go to the gas station, that we have to pay another 3% on our ta, uh, from the city? Is this what this is saying?
No, ma'am.
What is it saying?
Oh, after you're done asking your questions, we can answer everything for you.
Okay, that's my question. What is it for?
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone close the public portion to be heard. Mr. Barotis, do you imagine any of you wanna take this?
This is a tax that is already being levied, is already adopted. We have nothing, we cannot stop it. We cannot, we did not impose it ourselves.
It's been in place for how many years?
And, for, oh, gosh, I don't know, for a long, long time. And this is an agreement with the county so that the city gets its share of the tax that is already being levied. It's just to provide that we get our distribution of, of an existing tax.
Okay.
That being said, motion to approve?
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Item number seven?
A resolution approving the award of invitation to bid 2017-18/24--
That's award, actually, number seven.
What did I say? Award, award. For Bush Hawk, and, I guess it'll get worse, and Herbicide Services for the Tam O Shantha property to complete property services of South Florida.
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number seven? Not seeing anyone close that to be heard from the, for the public?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass unanimously.
Item eight, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach authorizing a sole source purchase for Cascade Pump and electric motor rated 50 horsepower for low-lift pump at the city's West Water Plant, $38,750.
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number eight? Not seeing anyone close that to the public?
I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Drosky, you have a question?
Not, not a question. I just wanted to point out, I mean, we're all not fans of sole source, but this pump is only available from one, one contractor, so it's in our backup material that Hydro Pumps is the only authorized distributor for Cascade Pump, so that's why it's sole source.
So, is that a second?
Sure.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Item nine, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach authorizing a sole source purchase of a bowl assembly and line shaft bearing kit for the existing vertical turbine pump in the city's water plant in the amount of $85,900.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anybody come forward. I'm gonna close it to the public. We have--
I'm gonna make a motion to approve this sole source because it's the only place we can get it.
Commissioner Drosky?
That was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that a second?
Sure.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Parnas. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass unanimously.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving a work authorization with CH2M Hill Engineers in the amount of $55,520 for geotechnical engineering work to analyze the injection well system of the West Water Plant Class One industrial injection well and prepare the renewal application for the Florida Department of Environmental Permit Underground Injection Control Permit.
Thank you. Anyone here to comment on item number 10? Not seeing anyone. We close it to the public on item 10?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass unanimously.
Next is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving a work authorization with Kenneth R. Carlson, architect, PA, in the amount of $199,420 to provide professional services for the preparation of a design criteria package and associated services for city hall renovation.
City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gans. Just quickly, if it would please the city commission, I'd like to have Mr. Santucci just give a brief overview of what this process is and how it'll impact the timeline for the three projects. So, it's related on the next three items before the public to be heard.
That's fine. Sure.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, City Commission, Dave Santucci, Assistant City Manager. Is this on? All right.
Just, I'm sorry, Dave. Just by a show of hands, can everybody in the back hear this? Hear the microphone? Thank you.
Okay, so--
Chatter in the back, so my apologies.
Thank you. I'll talk generally about these three projects, and if there is specific questions related to each project, I could certainly address them individually as each item comes up. But what we have before you are the, are work authorizations associated with the three bond construction projects that we recently passed and, and received the proceeds for, that being the city hall renovations, the redevelopment of the Center for Active Aging, and of course, the redevelopment of the Tigner Center. As discussed in those pro, in that process, cost estimates, conceptual cost estimates, were based off of us working with three separate architects to come up with those conceptual cost estimates. From there, we have moved forward with presenting to you work authorizations for each one of those consultants to prepare a, to prepare a, basically, a proposal or a set of, of documents that would then be incorporated into a request for qualifications through the competitive, the Competitive Negotiation Act, Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act pursuant to it, through the design-build solicitation process. So, these are the design criteria package work authorizations, which will consist of certain elements of what each project will consist of. Those will be incorporated again into a solicitation, go through the CCNA process to secure design-build firms to move forward with all three of those projects.
Okay. I guess the question I'm gonna ask is, why is this, why are we having to go out to do this? Can you give the reason?
Why are we having to go out to do this?
Yes.
So, this first one, this first work authorization exceeds $30,000, requiring your approval.
Why can we not do it internally? I think is really what my point is.
We, we, this is going to take a, a team to fulfill this requirement. As you can see, it's not just Mr. Carlson who will be doing all the work preparing this design criteria package, but the work of several subconsultants. The culmination of the work, as you can see in the proposal, is very extensive and requires an enormous amount of time and commitment to complete the design criteria package that we can use to then go ahead out to solicit the design-build firms.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone from the public here to comment? Do we have any commission questions for Mr. Santucci? Mr. Commissioner Drosky?
I mean, you and I spoke, Mr. Santucci, before the meeting, but can you explain, you know, what the process was, I guess, to allocating the three different, you know, consultants to these projects?
Absolutely. So, we went through a process a while back to secure consultants on our CCNA Continuing Services Contract. Okay? We have a library of services in there, ranging from structural engineering, architectural, landscape architectural, geotech, water, surveying, just the whole gamut of the different disciplines within architectural engineering that fall under the, the Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act. Through those agreements, we have three qualified firms to perform this type of work, that being Kenneth Carlson Architects, Walter Zachariah, and Brimelow Ajmil. We have used each one of them in this, for, in each one of these processes, projects, excuse me. So, as you can see, we're using one for each project, distributing the work in the spirit of the CCNA Continuing Services Contract, which encourages that.
And you indicated to me-- And you indicated to me that you were comfortable with all three of these amounts, but what in staff's opinion, or what led to that opinion that these three amounts were fair and reasonable?
Okay. So, it, it all has to do with the level of effort to prepare the design criteria packages and the level of completion that the design criteria package will be in terms of a complete set of design. The highest level of completion that the design criteria package will be for any one of these projects is 50%. The two projects that we're, we're looking to bring to 50% are city hall renovations and the Center for Active Aging. The city hall renovations are rather complex because you're dealing with rebuilding a existing structure that has been rebuilt probably twice already. So, to understand the systems that are already inside these walls, being the MEP, the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing, the HVAC systems, and then to have to bring those up to certain codes because we will be doing a certain amount of construction that will require that, it's going to be pretty intense. So, based on the level of effort required and the fact that this is a renovation rather than building a brand-new structure, the time that it's going to take to complete that, the level of effort, we believe that this is appropriate. As it applies to costs, you'll notice that all three of the cost proposals, the hourly rates, are generally in line with each other. We made sure that we negotiated to such a state so that it would be market fair, reasonable rates for the different, the different disciplines that would be performing this work. Principals, architects, MEPs, so on and so forth. When it comes to the Center for Active Aging, that we also felt needed to be brought to 50% through a design criteria package, because that's got its own complications. You're dealing with an existing facility for public use and in many cases is tied to federal and state grant funding. So we have to maintain operations in there while we're constructing this. So there's gonna be a tremendous amount of phasing approach to it. So, for those reasons, we felt that it was important to get us to 50% there as well. The one thing I did not mention with that, with this project and city hall, is that we really want to ensure that we incorporate that Pioneer Grove standard, and so by dealing with the consultants through the design criteria package, we really get to, to put in the requirements in that design criteria package related to Pioneer Grove that the design-build firm will have to adhere to, and that's very important to us as well. So, those two projects, 50%. Tigner Center, a little different. We can be a little bit more creative in this regard because it's going to be a teardown and a rebuild. It's certainly going to have a tremendous amount of use. It's going to be the largest community center we have. We really want to give the design-build firms that respond to our solicitation a great deal of creativity and leeway in terms of what they provide back to us. So the concept here, and this is not uncommon, is that we will get to 30% design with the design criteria package. From there, when we release the design-build solicitation, we will shortlist to three proposers, who will then, once we shortlist them, will be required to bring those to 50%, giving us various designs, various schematics and elevations. Those will be, of course, based off of the design criteria package specifications, but allows us to see just how much those shortlisted firms understand, not only the vision of the city, but the vision of the residents and what the facility use will be. So, that's why that one will be at 30%. You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Mr. Santucci, you and I talked about this at length, and I, my, my comments are really for the public on this particular one, because I understand what you're doing and I questioned you all at length about when or whether or not we were going to be able to sublet some of this work to the contractors that are in Deerfield Beach.
Of course.
We could, you know, and, and, and you assured me that we'll be able to do that after this particular stage. I just want the public to know that once we get into the building phase, then we'll be out there letting people know, okay, here are subcontracting opportunities. That is important to those people who live in the city, that they get a chance to have, or to help build these particular facilities. So if you just want to go over and reassure them that this is going to occur, it may not happen in the, the design phase, but it certainly will come along as we progress with the building.
Certainly, and thank you Vice Mayor. These design criteria package, when they are incorporated into our solicitation document, they will be subject to our local vendor and our small business, small disadvantaged business entity program requirements. And so, we will be evaluating them and providing preference in line with our ordinance based off of those requirements, and they will be subject to, to adhering to those and to proving to us that they are meeting those goals. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Santucci. Anyone from the public here to comment on, and should we do all these together, 11, 12, 13? Anyone care to comment on items number 11, 12, or 13?
Terry Scott, 624 Northwest Second Way. Thank you, City Manager. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you so much, especially when we talk about the Johnny Tigner Center. We appreciate this new structure that will be going forth. Commissioner Battle, I heard you say, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Battle, I, I heard you say about giving out to the community. I would pray that we would make sure that the small businesses here that is able to do some of this work become vendors of Deerfield Beach, because we know at times, we kind of miss out the ball because we are not vendors of the city, but if we would make sure that these small businesses now get in order, that they may fit the requirement that will come forth in the building of these structures that are going on. Once again, I say thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and to this commission again, for this vision, especially when it come down to the Johnny L. Tigner Center. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Yes.
Yes.
Gwen Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield. I would just like to say that in all of the building that we're going forward with, that the community and the residents, just like FDOT does those charrettes and have you come out and look at what's being proposed, that on each one of these sites, that we have that type of activity, so that the residents have some input. I know that there's a certain structure or a certain type of structure that the City Manager may want city hall to look like and be comfortable for everyone, be comfortable for the staff's use, but we also have to think of the residents who come in and out of these buildings and facilities also. So, I would like to see charrettes held on each one of these building opportunities here that we're moving forward with, because remember, it's our money that you're spending building these buildings, and we want to be sure that the public feels that they're comfortable in them as well as the staff that has to work here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I was hoping that maybe there'd be a representative from some of these firms here tonight, but if not, I do have a question for the people who are building the Tigner Center, Bremello and, and Partners. I wanted to ask them, how many public buildings of this type are being built to withstand category four hurricanes? And how many city buildings of a non-emergency use have full generators? And also, I was curious, was the city planning on obtaining property and windstorm insurance on this particular building?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone, I'm gonna close the public portion to be heard.
This would be, then, a motion for 11, 12, and 13 would be in order, items 11, 12, and 13.
Move approval.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drowsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item 14, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving amendments to the scope of work for the Southwest Third Avenue Project under the Florida Department of Transportation Mobility Project Plan for the city.
Okay. Commission comments before I open it to the public?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes. You know, we, at the District Two meeting, this, this brought up a lot of chatter and, and information given about this particular project. If, Eric, can you put the thing up on the stage? And as you will see, and after having listened to those people in District Two, it's a markedly different street than what we originally were going to do. It still maintains the four lanes, but it decreases the size of the lane, of the outside lane, and puts in space for bicycles. If we approve this tonight, Mr. Mayor and community, then what we, we still have a chance to get the monies from the state in order to do this project. So I just want people to know that we did listen to you all and we came back with something that not only I think the community can buy into, but also that still allows us to get the funding from the state to complete this project. Can you all see that? If you can't see it from where you're sitting, you know, we can't, can we make it a little, and this is Third or Martin Luther King Boulevard, and we still have a interest in, interest in exit from the school that will not allow the backup or the stacking that we have now when the school is going in or letting the kids off. Thank you.
This also won't be closing off those access points to the residential streets, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Yes.
Gwen Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest Sixth Way. I just want to say that I truly appreciate being just a resident now, because there are things that I can say that I could not say possibly before or would not dare say. But I just want to say thank you to Vice Mayor Battle and the MPO and FDOT and everybody, you know, involved for listening to the residents. This is one time I can truly say that the residents came out and they expressed their concerns, and the concerns were legitimate, and they are legitimate, because we know what that roadway takes and what has happened along there since the five or six years ago when this was brought forth. So I want to say thank you for listening to us, and we hope that once this is completed, that they will look at the entrance from Martin Luther King and 10th Street and do those medians in there, just like they are at Martin Luther King and Hillsborough. So again, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone, I'm gonna close the public portion to be heard. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number 14.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drowsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next item is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach waiving the city's competitive selection requirements to authorize the city to enter into a loan agreement with Bank of America for a loan in the aggregate amount not to exceed $11,500,500 to refinance the city's outstanding utility improvements loan at more favorable interest
City managers, are you able to give us a little backstory on this?
Yes, actually, I have Mr. Dunkley that's here to address this quickly, and then Mr. Morodis can also explain the waiver of the procurement code.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gans, Vice Mayor Battle, Commissioners. The, this item, the first item, is essentially requesting a waiver of the purchasing policies and procedures, but to kind of put this into context, the purpose of the overall two next items, this one as well as the other, is to simply request your permission to refinance a loan with the Bank of America. This refinancing will potentially generate approximately $950,000 in interest savings over the remaining 10-year life of the loan. The original loan agreement was entered into in 2008 at an interest rate of 4.81%. This is an opportunity for us to obtain refinancing at an even lower rate of interest. As of April 19th, 2018, the indicative rate of which will be entering into a loan agreement with Bank of America was 2.98%. To put this more into context, the interest rate has increased slightly since that time to about 3%, but this is still quite favorable to the city. In terms of the waiver that is requested, the Federal Reserve Board will meet next on June 13th. Their next meeting after that will be, I think, the end of July. What that does, it, it gives the Fed potentially two possibilities for rate increases, which will significantly reduce the city's potential for interest savings. So we are hereby requesting a waiver of the purchasing policies and procedures. The proposed lender is a lender that recently served as the underwriter for the revenue bond, and we will be going through the same procedures for selecting the winning proposer, which currently they're the highest-ranked underwriter of municipal bonds in the state. So we think, from our standpoint, if we were to put out an RFP, that the outcome might be quite similar to what was obtained during the revenue bonds. So therefore, we're requesting your blessings to move forward with this refinancing transaction.
Thank you. So the attorney, you have anything to add on the waiver?
No, the additional point on the waiver is that, because of, as Hugh indicated, that the interest rates are likely to change and go up, and the time going through that process would, would in order to our financial disadvantage. The standard for granting a waiver in our procurement code is that it's in the best interest of the city to waive the procurement code and that the waiver will not in order to the financial disadvantage of the city. And as you can indicate from Mr. Dunkley's presentation, it's his opinion that both those criteria have been met. If the commission makes that finding, it is lawfully entitled to waive the procurement code, except for in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item, number 15?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I looked at all of the backup on this proposal, and I could find nowhere in the backup at all the term sheet from Bank of America, which is very, which is usually you would find in this. Also, it did not say at all if this is a municipal bond or just a regular bank loan. And especially with the price of a 10-year treasury bill at 3% currently, it would not make any sense that the city was able to borrow unless this was a municipal bond at a rate the same as the 10-year treasury bill. Also, there's nowhere in the documentation that talks about what are the refinancing costs of this new loan. talks about what are the refinancing costs of this new loan. Nowhere in there did it say anything on refinancing costs, or what is the Dunlap and Associates fee on this transaction. Also, there was an Exhibit C that was in the back of the presentation after about the first hundred pages that showed an interest rate of four point eight one. So that also doesn't make sense. Also, it talked about the debt service savings of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, where's the backup for determining the savings number? It was nowhere to be found. Also, the finance director, and also in the backup, talked about the FOMC and the, them possibly raising interest rates. Well, being an ex-banker and other bankers in the room can explain to the commission that the FOMC controls short-term interest rates. The interest rate on this type of loan is dependent on the price of the ten-year treasury bill, which is controlled by market forces, not the FOMC. So I would appreciate clarification on all of these points that I've brought up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Glenn Sullivan, two three seven seven Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I, I'm not sure if I'm stepping on Dan, but when I read through the material, I believe the remaining time of the loan is ten years, but I do not see a term for the, a proposed term for the new, the new loan. So I guess my question is, is it going to be the remaining ten years, or is there a new term that's being proposed?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anybody coming up when we close it to the public. Mr. Dunkley, can you answer some of the questions that came up?
The remaining term of the loan is ten years, and that was specifically indicated in the memo. In terms of the term sheet, the term sheet merely gives a synopsis of what is included in the proposed loan agreement, which is part of the backup. The term sheet specifies the indicative rate of interest, which is what I just indicated, is two point nine eight percent. The rate, however, will be set after the second hearing. It will be set prior to June thirtieth. That rate is variable at the moment. In terms of the ten-year treasury note, it's a little bit over three percent, but the Fed action does have an indirect implication on the long-term rates, because the, the rates are essentially, the short-term rates, it's a effect that will, in terms of interest rates, we have various factors that go into determining the rate of interest. And one primary factor is what we call maturity risk premium, and that is the length of the loan. So the longer the loan is, the higher the rate of interest. So if we take the gentleman that just spoke his analogy, the shorter-term loans will, in effect, have a lower rate of interest. So if you take the theory of a maturity risk premium, which is how long the maturity of the loan, the longer the maturity is, the higher the rate of interest, because the borrower, it, the rate of default increases. So therefore, even if the Fed, which they invariably, when they set a rate of interest, they're talking about the discount rate, which is what banks lend to each other, but that rate invariably will affect the long-term rate of interest because of the way our interest rates are, are established. There are several components which the maturity of the loan is taken into consideration in setting the rates, as we all know. So, so all in all, with the term sheet that the gentleman asked about, the term sheet is a, is a mere synopsis of what is included in the loan agreement. By, for the most part, we will extend the refinancing terms beyond the twenty twenty-eight period, which is indicated in the staff memo.
Thank you, Mr. Dunkley. I think, and the, what is the refinancing cost?
It's sixty thousand dollars, which is comprised of bond council, is about fifteen thousand. The bank's council is ten thousand. The financial advisor is another twelve or so thousand. The city council is roughly, I think it's five to seventy-five hundred. We have a defense opinion of twenty-five hundred. Coupled together, we have a digital assurance certification, which is, they'll be posting all of the bond information on the, what they call the EMA, is the municipal market, electronic marketplace, which displays all of the lending. That's another twenty-five hundred. Coupled together, that's going to come to a little bit south of sixty thousand dollars, which is significantly less than upon. Just to kind of respond to the gentleman, this is, not to get too technical, but whenever governments borrow, if they borrow over a certain amount, we are required to prepare Form eighty thirty-eight, which is a tax return, because it is considered a bond, but not in the sense of where we go to sell securities. This is a private loan from a bank. However, it is still considered a governmental borrowing, which is required of us to prepare a tax return, which is called an eighty thirty-eight G. So I don't want to get too much into the nuances, but just to reply to his question, this is not going to affect the tax rate. This borrowing is for the water and sewer fund, just to clarify. This has nothing to do with the ad valorem taxes. This is in connection with the water and sewer fund, just to kind of clarify that.
This is from the old bond from two thousand eight, that this is?
Yes, two thousand eight bond, the purpose of?
A cheaper price?
Exactly, which was for the reverse osmosis plan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunkley. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, before Hugh, before Hugh leaves, I just, and you asked the question, how much was the origination cost? And you said about sixty thousand. So is that nine fifty? You stated minus sixty thousand? Or is it, is it, did that net nine fifty savings? Just academic.
Yeah, and strangely enough, there is no loan origination cost. The ten thousand that we're paying, we're paying certain costs on behalf of the lender, primarily the, their council. Their council is going to charge us?
I know, we might call it different things, but it's going to cost us one way or another, sixty thousand to get this loan.
Sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, so the net savings is about eight hundred and ninety thousand?
No, it's nine hundred and fifty net of those costs.
Oh, nine hundred and fifteen. So spend sixty to save nine hundred and fifteen. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. That is for item number thirteen. Item number fourteen, I think we kind of covered the same.
Yeah, but we have to, do we have to?
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number fourteen? Read the title, please.
An ordinance of the city commissioner of the city of Deerfield Beach authorizing the negotiation of a loan in aggregate amount not to exceed eleven million five hundred thousand to refinance the city's outstanding loan from the Florida Municipal Loan Council, approving the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, accepting a proposal from Bank of America for such loan, providing certain other matters in connection with such loan, and providing effective date. This is first reading.
Anyone from the public here to comment? Commission, have any comments before that? No?
Dan Hirsch, three thirty, southeast Nineteenth Avenue. So just for clarification, would the city finance director answer this direct question? Is this loan a ten-year tax-free municipal bond?
Is that it? Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Comments? Mr. Dunkley? Sorry.
Yes, Mayor, it's a ten-year tax-free municipal bond. It's not a municipal bond. And just to clarify, a municipal bond, it's a private loan from the bank. And a municipal bond is a security that's tradable on the securities market. It is not a municipal bond. It's a loan, a ten-year loan that's going to be entered into between the city and the lender, Bank of America Merrill Lynch. It is?
Ten-year tax-free.
The tax-free nature of it is that the bank is, is not going to have to pay taxes on the interest income, because they're a recipient of municipal, of exempt borrowing interest proceeds. So it's treated in the same way, and not to get into taxation, it's tax-free to the recipient of the interest income, which is the bank. The same as if you purchase a municipal bond, you wouldn't have to pay tax on your interest income. It's going to be the same way for the bank, but it's a private loan that's entered into between the bank and the city of Deerfield Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Dunkley. Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have roll call?
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Next item is a resolution of the city commissioner of the city of Deerfield Beach opposing offshore drilling activities, including seismic airgun blasting, providing for conflict, providing an effective date.
Commission comments?
My comment was, my, my comment was that there was not much backup at all. That's a comment.
Vice Mayor Battle?
There's not much backup at all, because this is a resolution that the legal cities is backing, and, and we have been advised, you know, wow, we're on the shore here. And instead of having all the offshore drilling, with the fracking and all that stuff going on, we thought it wise for coastal cities that we pass a resolution in opposition to offshore drilling.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Looking for a motion?
You got a motion to approve?
We have a motion, looking for a second. Are we a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Since we did take a motion, actually, since I'm on the prevailing side, I'd like to reopen it, change my vote. I'd like to open this up back up to the public. Anyone from the public here to comment on this? Anyone in favor of offshore drilling off of Deerfield Beach? We're going to close it to the public, looking for another motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Passed unanimously. You said nay? Okay, four to one. Thank you. Next item?
Mr. Morotis? Just quickly, Monday, June twenty-fifth, starting at six PM to ten PM, we will be doing budget workshops at the Hillsborough Technology Center. They'll also continue that same week on Tuesday and Wednesday night at the same location in the same timeframe. Starting on Monday night, will be the property appraiser, Mr. Marty Keare, will be here to explain your, not your individual tax bills, but how they assess property values, things of that nature, and other functions that they do when they send us the tax rolls. And then after that, our new budget manager, Allison Teslia, will be doing a budget one oh one for the public to talk about how we budget, what the different enterprise funds are, things of that nature. And then after that, we will get into the actual revenue forecasts and departmental expenditures. And as always, at the end of it, there will be a period of time for public comment. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney, you have any comments?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
No comment tonight.
Commissioner Parnas?
No comment.
Commissioner Drosky?
A couple, a couple of things. We went pretty fast at the beginning. The, the minutes that we approved on page twelve, item nine, there was no, it didn't show the vote. So it's missing the vote on there. I believe that was passed five to zero. It was abandoning, abandonment of an easement. But it doesn't, it has the discussion, but it doesn't have the actual vote in there. So I don't know how we fix that, but I forgot to point that out at the beginning of the meeting. Secondly, before our next meeting, a couple of events will happen. Monday, May twenty-eighth will be Memorial Day. So please take a moment and remember the men and women that have fought for our country, and especially those that gave the ultimate sacrifice, that did not live to see this day in this great country and the debate that we can have. So please, please take a moment on Memorial Day during your barbecue or time with family to remember what Memorial Day is truly all about. That Thursday, May thirty-first, Thursday at seven o'clock PM at Constitution Hall will be my next town hall meeting. It will be focused on the southwest Tenth Street issue. Recently, the Florida Department of Transportation had a kickoff meeting at the Doubletree Hotel. There were many residents that attended that meeting, who walked away displeased with the answers they received, who could not make the meeting. So this is another opportunity. FDOT will be there, their consultants will be there, in a more kind of personal setting than the kind of big hotel setting that they had before, to ask our questions and to follow up on the feedback that we received from that meeting. So that will be May thirty-first at Constitution Park, again at seven o'clock PM. June, Saturday, June second, at nine o'clock AM will be the grand opening of the Deerfield Beach apiary here at the Central City Campus. Please come out to that. We are only the third city in, or third entity, rather, in all of South Florida to have one of these apiaries. And it is not for apes, as the mayor likes to, to jest with me. It is for bees. And the, I believe Oakland Park was the first city to have it. Broward County at Quiet Waters, excuse me, at Trade Winds Park was the second, and Deerfield Beach will be the third. So come out, please, on June second to our grand opening at nine o'clock. And then last, but not least, I had the distinct honor on last Thursday in Fort Lauderdale of attending an event honoring the one hundred outstanding women of Broward County, Florida. And one of the recipients is our very own Vice Mayor Gloria Battle. So I want to congratulate her. It's an honor, well received. You, it went through, you know, strict criteria, including community service, and she certainly qualifies for that. So I, I personally want to thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you all who are interested in the quiet zones, we're working on them. MPO sent out a, a new, there's no timeline, but we are working on the quiet zones. And on the nineteenth, we will be opening, or Brightline will be opening the station in Miami. Now is the time, if you want to get a, a ride on the inaugural train, you can't hear?
No.
Oh, if you want to get a ride on the inaugural train to Miami on the Brightline, now is the time. The nineteenth of May, they're going to be opening up the Miami station. So now you'll be able to go from Miami all the way to Palm Beach in like fifteen minutes, I guess. I'm just saying, one way or the other. For those of you who are interested in the cemetery, take pictures now. We, we go by there, we're starting, we're putting in dirt, we're, we're doing everything. If you want to record this for history purposes, one way or the other, the Bran Hill, the Ritterstonos Memorial Park, we're working on it. We hope to have it. I, we're hoping to have it, Mr. City Manager, by the end of the year, open to the public. But I know that there are some people who like to record things like this. So just take a drive around and, and see what we're, we're up to at that particular cemetery. Don't forget, the code enforcement town hall is on June eleventh. I will be repeating this, because I want people to come out and try to understand what code is about. And finally, Mr. City Manager, if we could have Evie and her staff to do a workshop, to, to assist vendors, small minority vendors in the area who want to become vendors, basically, then I think we ought to put on that workshop, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple, couple of points. There's a question asked as to why we were doing
then I think we ought to put on that workshop, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple, couple of points. There was a question asked as to why we were doing our new facilities, that some of the hardening that we're putting in place as far as a hurricane, the level with the Hurricane Four, I believe they're category four, that we were asked why we were bringing that as far as the generator solution and why we're putting in generators. The bottom line is we want the ability to, if you don't think we need it, I don't think you understand what goes on during a hurricane, quite frankly. Broward County's made it very clear that once they, they close their shelters, their expectation is that the cities pick up the slack for residents that are in need. And if you went through any of the things or actually went around and dealt with some of the issues we had immediately after the hurricane, where you had people at high risk, which is what you would have certainly at the Center for Active Aging, but if you had places of high risk, high risk, like we had with the Palms, in which we did not have the generator operating, we did not have electricity or air for them, the ability to move people around, we need to have a place in this city that, that can house that. And if, I can tell you the MOX Center, based on what our staff did, which is outstanding during the hurricane, you cannot put all the staff in there comfortably. You will need the space and you will need the ability to have power. You will also, that Tignor Center location has been designated as one of the potential, one of the auxiliary locations for a pod, so that when they do water distribution, ice distribution, to have those operational and to have, have the ability to house people in there, that's essential. And if you don't understand that, I'm, I think you need to read up on what hurricanes do. So I think it's essential for the city. It's the right thing to do. May 18th, this Friday, is Haitian Flag Day. So when you see our, the flags floating around in the city of Deerfield Beach, we will be honoring the Haitian Flag Day. It is very big for our, a large segment of our community. It is a big holiday and it's, it's a matter of pride for the Haitian community, so we look forward to celebrating that again this year. Ocean Blues and Brews Festival will be Saturday, 3 to 7 o'clock over on the beach, so please come out for that. Enjoy, but be safe. Looking for a motion to adjourn? We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.